Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Today is February 6th, 2025. This is a partially remote participation meeting and the members of the board are gathered here in the Earl Mountain Room at Town Hall. Applicants and the public may participate in person here or online through the Zoom app or by phoning in. The meeting will be live broadcast on local access channel 18 and streaming on the town website. Under the executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law signed by our former governor Charlie Baker on March 12th of 2020, all members in any meeting of the public body may participate remotely. I'm Joanne Verlinden, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I will be conducting the meeting with the help of my colleagues. We have two cases tonight, one that is being continued from December 5th, and that is case number ZBA 2024-6. 245 Nossett Light Beach Road, map 23, parcel 25. Chris Carter and Deanna Carter, owners applicants, seek a variance pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, and Eastham Zoning Bylaw, Section 7.2.4 setback requirements to demolish an existing dwelling due to coastal bank erosion and construct a new dwelling at five-foot setbacks from the property line in violation of minimum property setback requirements. The applicants also seek a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Eastham Zoning Bylaw, Section 19.1 for nonconforming uses, buildings, structures to increase the existing habitable space, nonconformity for the proposed new dwelling under Eastham Zoning Bylaw, Section 2.4.1.7. Mr. Zender?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. It's nice to see you all again. I'm Ben Zender. I'm here on behalf of Chris and Deanna Carter and with me-
Uh, excuse me, one minute, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Seated on this case, Martin Ridge, Bob Sheldon, Doug Bird, Jared Carey, and myself.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Ben Zender. With me is Sabella Santa-Guillermo, who's our project architect, and then I believe Chris or Deanna are online to answer any questions you might have. You may remember at the last hearing, there was some, um, some discussion about, to address some concerns that were, that were put forward by members and also by the National Seashore about the proximity of the structure to the, um, what I call the rear Westley Lot Line, and also, um, some questions about ownership of, um, the paper road C Street that's on the Westley side. What we've done is, um, Sabella's gone back and, and done some redesign work to do a number of things, including, um, pulling the structure further away from the Westley Lot Line, removing a staircase that's on the rear side of the project, uh, moving the house, um, further to the north to create a 13.6-foot, uh, setback, uh, from the Southley Lot Line to the National Seashore. Additionally, um, what I've submitted to your board for your review, if you, to the extent you're interested, was, uh, we went back and, and searched the record title for this property, going back to the initial developers laying out of the, of the subdivision plan back at the turn of the last century. And what we discovered, which was interesting, was that, um, because of the way that the subdivision was laid out, Chris and Deanna own the entirety of C Street all the way across, because the land on the other side of C Street wasn't part of the same development. So the derelict fee statute, or the, the common law precursor to the derelict fee statute, uh, gives you title all the way across in that case. So they own, um, what scales off, it looks like it scales off to about a 20-foot width, going across, if I remember the numbers correctly. So we feel that gives some additional comfort to the, uh, the neighbors on the west side of, uh, of the, of C Street is also, and also the board that, you know, even though we're holding an 8.6, eight, I'm sorry, an eight-foot setback from the Westley sideline, we still have, uh, an entire, the entire width of the paperway that's unimproved. And, and you, all the, that have been out there, it's, it's pretty well vegetated. So we're hopeful that with these, um, changes in this explanation, that, you know, we have met your requirements for the granting of the variance. Um, I won't repeat the variance granting standard. We went through it at, at the last meeting. I think your staff report does a very nice job of laying out what the standard is. But if you have any questions about the standard and how we meet that standard, I'm happy to talk further on that. And thank you for your attention.
So essentially, on that C Street, we could say that we have 28 feet.
You could.
Rather than just the 8.6.
Yeah, they, they own, uh, Chris and Deanna own that entire width of C Street. They own it under, um, what we call the doctrine of, uh, an implied easement or an easement by estoppel. They own it subject to the rights of other people to pass and repass over C Street, which in this case, because we've got the National Seashore and because the properties have been fully developed out there, we think the likelihood of somebody wanting to open up that road and go through, um, well, I used to say the likelihood is not really high that somebody will open up a road. What we're seeing happening now, because of coastal erosions, people are having to reconfigure where their driveways are. So there's always a possibility that somebody will need to come down C Street or one of those paper roads to get new access to existing homes. So Chris and Deanna's ownership of that road means that nobody else can do anything with it other than if it's reasonably necessary, create a driveway or a road through there. And so Chris and Deanna can't block that. But I think it's a fair statement that there is a 28-foot-
Setback.
A setback, yes, thank you.
Okay.
I want to say thanks for doing the research, Ben, on that and clearing that up. I think that, um, so we're saying that the seashore is not in the butter going towards the west.
No, there, there are butter only on the south.
Okay. All right. I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jared?
I just had one question. Um, I'm referring back to the letter that we received from the National Park Service, and there's a comment that they make on here during the construction period that provided five-foot, which is now eight-foot setbacks on the southern and western boundaries of the property line of the proposed dwelling may encourage construction vehicle intrusion onto the land in possession of Cape Cod National Seashore for ease of access to the proposed dwelling and thereby cause damage to destruction of or interference with undeveloped natural landscape and vegetation growth on the property. I went out to the property again today, and those boundaries are not very well marked.
No.
Um, I'm just wanting to know what's going to be done to ensure that that vegetation is protected or to, to limit the possibility for construction vehicles, um, damaging vegetation on park property.
Well, uh, you know, if the board wants, we could certainly, we could certainly flag the park, we could certainly flag the boundaries, um, with stakes and, stakes and flags, you know, during construction. You could certainly make that a condition of the approval if you want. We're happy to do it.
It, it would seem like it would be the good thing to do-
Sure.
Given the seashore's concern.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Doug?
Uh, no, no concerns. I appreciate the work you did moving, moving the building.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bird.
And the research.
It was fun.
It looked like fun, actually. As an lawyer, I'm like, wow, this, this must have been fun.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
I read something earlier before I got here that back in the 1800s, that this was, uh, these lot lines were laid out. Is that true?
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to go back-
1893.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and check, check the plan.
Last century, you were off by a century.
Well, I, yeah, I meant the turn of the last century. I meant from the 1800s to the 1900s. So it's, um-
1893, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah, it may be what happens with those plans, they, they get created in the late 1800s when we began doing plans and then, but the recording of those plans sometimes isn't until the 1920s. So you have a bear of a time with, like this, I think this plan was planned with 24, page 11 or something like that. We've worked with a lot. So there's two problems with working with these plans. One is they, they get created and then they don't get recorded for 20 or 30 years until somebody needs to do something with them, which creates a little bit of a problem researching them. And the other thing that happens is what the developers back then would do is they would create multiple plans for the subdivision, and then they record one of them. So then, like, there's no plan to the, to the north and no plan to the south, and it's, it's, you know, just sitting in some surveyor's closet somewhere. So it's difficult, but this particular plan that we've given you pieces of to show the relative pieces, that's one of the plans we've worked with in this area quite a bit.
And they're all handwritten?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of them, they don't have dimensions, like, they don't dimension the roads, you know, you can kind of look at the lots and they're 40 by 100, you know that, and you can kind of scale off the road to the lot width, but, yeah, they're, they're kind of messy. Well, thank you.
Let's have one question for the chair. So with the legal analysis that was done about the C Street and the setback being 28 feet from the opposite side of that road, do we need to grant a variance for that side of the, was it the south side of the building?
I, I think it'd be dangerous to start putting roads into our, into our calculations. We need to do, do as we are asked to do and let the road stand on its own, because as, as Ben mentioned, that could be a road down the road.
Yeah.
We don't know that.
Your definition, your definition of a lot, as most who don't include road areas, roads actually define the lots. So the only way I think that they could actually make that setback a lawful 28 feet would be to go to the planning board and present a new plan of land that incorporates that road into the lot. And then theoretically, what they really should do at that point is go to the Superior Court and, and file a petition to acquire titles and exclude any rights of people to pass over, and, and we don't tend to do that.
Right.
Easier, easier for us to grant a variance.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think-
Especially since the C Shore-
I was only mentioning that because it gives the appearance, at least, of more-
Yes.
Room into the setback.
Functions that way.
That's all. Not, not that we have to go filing stuff with the-
Right. And, and the seashore has already agreed to the five feet, and I think we're, we're exceeding that at this point. So we've done-
Right.
The, what the, what the park service has asked us to do, which is to minimize the impact on the property.
So I'm-
Thank you.
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Anybody else, questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right. Let's move to the findings of fact.
This is the issue.
Right. Yes, okay, I think I have. Bob, would you read them, please?
Okay. Yes.
Okay, but there's another page to this, right?
Yeah. One, two, four, and then the-
Uh, you-
Read one through four here.
I, I messed this up.
All right, one through four here, then these, then what?
It doesn't matter what order, just as long as they all-
Okay. Is there something after seven?
And then we're going to skip five through seven down here. That's replaced.
Uh, okay, and then, yeah.
Skip this.
Yeah.
No. The sheet is good.
Everything on that sheet.
Read everything on the sheet, just-
I'm glued.
Okay.
The variance criteria.
Okay, got it.
No number eight.
Read everything on the sheet and then notes.
Yeah, we got it. All right, now we're back. In the case of ZBA 2024-06, the zoning board of appeals finds that, one, the property is located at 245 Nossett Light Beach Road and is located in the Seashore Zoning District. Two, Chris Carter and Deanna Carter, owner applicant, got, seek a variance to Massachusetts General Law, uh, Chapter 48, Section 10, and Eastham's zoning bylaw, Section 7 dot 2 dot 4 setback requirements to demolish an existing dwelling due to coastal bank erosion and construct a new dwelling at five-foot setbacks. But, yeah, that's right, okay. Property is having violation of the minimum property setback requirements. The applicant also seeks special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Section, uh, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Eastham Zoning Bylaw, Section 19 dot 2, nonconforming uses, building structures, to increase the existing habitable space, nonconformity for the proposed new dwelling under Eastham zoning bylaw, 2 dot 4 dot 1 dot 7. The board voted to approve a request by the applicant at the hearing on December 5th, 2024, to withdraw the application for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Eastham zoning bylaw, Section 19 dot 2. Thank you. Like, I can skip that next section. The board voted to grant a waiver from the providing, from providing the elevations for the existing structure. Okay, now I go over here. Various criteria. There, there are circumstances related to the shape, topology, and soil conditions of the land and structure. Eroding soil conditions of the coastal bank are impacting the shape of the lot as land areas taken away from the upland portion of the lot. Two, the literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve a substantial hardship. The hardship of soil conditions affecting the lot's shape is tied specifically to the land via the natural function of the eroding coastal bank. This hardship would be encountered by any potential applicant seeking to protect the existing structure or to construct a new structure and utilize the property for residential purposes. The proposed placement is intended to extend the length of time that the property is safe and viable for residential use. The desirable, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially derogating from, right, derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. If the structure is to remain in place on this property, moving it as far, right, now where?
On the eroding bank.
Oh, you cheated. Look at this. Okay. Okay, from the eroding coastal bank, it is, as possible, would provide better protection for the public and private health and safety of the property and its occupants and, and to the occupants of the surrounding properties, and would allow the surrounding environment to function in a more natural and beneficial manner. The setback restrictions under the zoning law are in place to help ensure that development is done in a manner that retains the character of the community and ensures a reasonable quality of life to owners and residents of the surrounding area. Several structures in the neighborhood have been relocated within the setbacks because the impending erosion of the coastal bank. Dwellings near property line setbacks have become common in the surrounding area. Okay, now I jump back.
Now you-
The board, back to here, right? Am I done?
You're done.
Well, well-
Yes.
Within this variance, we, we mentioned five feet, but we didn't go item number six here and seven on this, where we talk about the specific setbacks of the revised plans.
So number- So I need, I should start with six there?
Also add, add number six or seven.
Okay.
Well, seven, seven on the single standalone sheet, so we have the accurate numbers.
The board identified several concerns related to the proposed location of the dwelling and septic system and questioned whether the proposed building setbacks could be revised to ensure the setbacks reflected the hardship imposed on the main structure and not exterior decks and staircases, which are not critical to the building criteria required for the grant of a variance. And seven, the applicant provided revised plan with the proposed setbacks as follows: west setback eight feet, south setback 13 feet, six, 13.6 feet, east setback 39.7 feet, and north setback 36 feet. Am I done?
I think so.
I believe so. Yes. All right. May I, may I have a motion to accept the findings of fact?
Motion.
Martin, and may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I agree. Okay. Five to nothing, motion carried. Doug, would you read the conditions, please?
Proposed conditions: no building permit shall be issued until the application complies with all pertinent sections of the town of Eastham zoning bylaw. Number two, the applicant shall obtain a demolition permit and a building permit from the Eastham Building Department. Number three, the applicant shall verify bedroom count and septic design for adequacy with the approved plan with the Eastham Health Department, and if necessary, to obtain approval from the Board of Health prior to the issuance of the building permit. Four, all exterior light shall be down shielded and reduce light spill and nuance, nuisances to adjacent properties. Five, the applicant is responsible for providing building plans to the Eastham Building and Fire Department. Plans shall contain information on construction methods and materials sufficient to conduct a full code compliance review. Six, planned reviews conducted by town staff as a part of this approval have been conducted for conformance with applicable sections of the zoning bylaw and for adequacy of the site for public safety access and environmental impacts. An additional plan review for health and safety code compliance may be required and may result in changes to the approved plans. Any changes to the plans listed in this decision letter, except those that are de minimis, must be reviewed by the zoning board. If the board finds a change to be substantial, a renotice is necessary for a new hearing. Number seven, the applicant shall provide documentation from the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife confirming that the project will not adversely affect the resource area, area habitat and that of project, and that the project meets the state listed species performance standard prior to the issuance of a demolition or building permit. And I think the applicant agreed to add a condition that the property will be marked during construction, so the construction will not disturb, um, the property of the National Seashore or the surrounding, uh, properties.
There's three more in the back.
On the back.
Sorry, oops. It flipped. Uh, which now number nine, the applicant shall provide documentation that the project has been approved by the Eastham Conservation Commission prior to issuance of a demolition or building permit. New number 10, the applicant shall file a variance decision letter with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and provide a copy of the building department before issuance of a building permit. Number 11, the board reserves the right to monitor the ongoing construction for compliance with the approved plan.
All right. May I have a motion to accept the conditions?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, five, that, that's five to nothing. All right. So may I have a motion to, wait a minute?
That's it.
Do we need?
Nope, he's only asked for one thing, so he just needs one motion.
Special permit?
No, no, that was canceled.
That's right, that was, that, right, we took that out last two months ago. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the request for a variance for case number ZBA 2024-06 for 245 Nossett Light Beach Road?
I'm so moved.
Okay. And a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five to nothing, okay.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your hard work.
For your check.
All right.
Did you write this?
No.
The one I read was shorter than yours.
I know, no, I didn't. I printed that off. Jackie sent that, you know. Jackie sent that, and then she amended it.
Okay.
I, I know, I know. I mean, thank you. Thanks very much. All right. Our second case this evening, excuse me while I shuffle papers, please. Our second case this evening is case number ZBA 2025-1, 585 Campground Road, map seven, parcel 336. Jane Demio, am I pronouncing that right? The owner applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Eastham Zoning Bylaw, Section 7.2.4 setback requirements to construct an addition of 12-point feet by 22 feet, uh, for a three-season room at a setback of six feet, seven inches from the west property line in violation of minimum property setbacks, uh, setback requirements. And also, the Eastham Zoning Bylaw, Section 7.4.9.1 Site Plan Approval Special Permit to construct an addition on a residential lot that is pre-existing, nonconforming to the site coverage standards. And who is speaking? For you or both of you or?
It'll be mostly me.
Okay.
Uh, for the record, my name is Jason Ellis. I'm representing, um, Jane Demio, and we also have Russ Fulcher, the contractor, here with us also, if you have any questions. Um, so what we're looking to do, we're proposing to, um, construct-
I'm sorry, I did it again. Let me, let me seat the members of the board first.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my, my fault.
That's okay.
Okay, seated on this case, Martin, Bob, Doug, and Jared. Thank you, sir.
That's okay. So what we're looking to do is to construct a three-season room on top of the existing poured concrete patio that exists on the west side of the structure. Um, it would just consist of two side walls, a rear wall, and then the other side would be the existing house with a shed roof off the, off the existing house. Um, so the area of the patio right now, it would get, that would be constructed on, on that entire area of that patio is 12.7 feet out from the structure and 22 feet, um, side to side, but, uh, parallel with the structure. So the project is fairly straightforward. We have gone before the Board of Health. They have reviewed the, the project and they've approved it. Um, there is no conservation on this project. We're far enough away from the conservation area, so there's no jurisdiction there. Um, and, um, Jane might be able to get into a little bit more about what the room would be used for. But, um, it's a fairly straightforward project and be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Um, would you like to explain a little bit, what you're thinking?
I have a handicapped grandson who is 14 years old, autistic, missing a gene in his brain. And he is nonverbal, incontinent, a number of other things. When he comes down, he heads right outside to that area, which is, it has an awning on it now, and furniture. And, and it's hard to get him in at night, you know, and he just wants to be outside.
Sure.
So, um, having such a small area, living area in my house, you know, to be outside at night is, is great, but of course we got the bugs and everything else going on. So if I couldn't enclose it, it would just be a, a good space for him to just chill out in.
Do you worry that he'll leave the property?
Excuse me?
Do you worry that he will leave the property, wander off?
I, I put a six-foot fence enclosed all sides of the fence.
Yes, I saw that.
He doesn't, he doesn't go out.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
He's not capable of opening a gate.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. But, but he, but at least this would give him extra space.
Extra space.
And, and you as well, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More secure.
Okay.
Maybe he'd come down more.
Do they come often or?
He comes mostly, um, right now it's, um, anywhere of, of May, May through November that they come down.
Yeah. You live here year-round, is that right?
I live year-round, yes.
So they don't come for the holidays, for example?
No, I go off.
Oh, okay.
It's easier for me to go.
Sure, sure. Okay. Anybody, questions, comments?
Well, Joanne, I, I, when I saw this, and I'm familiar with it, with the property, uh, I immediately went through the packet and I jumped into the, the letter that she received from the next-door neighbor, because at this point, we generally hear a lot from the next-door neighbor.
Mm-huh. Oh, Natalie Culver?
Natalie Culver wrote, wrote a nice note and says she fully approves of this.
Yes, yes.
And so, given that, in my mind, given that it sits exactly where the patio was, and she's already has, it's already fenced behind that between her and the property next door.
Mm-huh.
I, I don't see it, I personally don't see a problem with this.
Yeah. Um, I was also impressed by the letter from your neighbors and others that have been in support of the project. Uh, one question is, the concrete foundation that's there now, are we building on top of that or are we removing that and putting in footings and stuff?
No, they'll just be building around top of it. It's actually a very well-poured, thick, concrete monolithic block.
So no demo, no, no equipment coming in like that.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
All right, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hey, I just had a question, the, does the, the expansion create any blocking or limitation for fire vehicles to get to the backside of the property?
No, because of the, if you look, Huckleberry Lane comes around the backside of the property. So the, basically half the property between the campground roadside and the Huckleberry Lane side. They can get anywhere they need to on that property from that side. Plus, it's a, there's a stockade fence that runs almost around the whole perimeter of the property. So they'd have to go through that stockade fence anyhow, but. But yeah, so it doesn't really impact the, the back there because you could access the back right off Huckleberry if they had to get in there, so.
And the other question was really for the board, which was really, what's the precedent been from the board in granting? A variance down to six feet from the property line, is there something?
Special permit?
Special permit, I mean, is this a, is this something the board has done and is there any concern they're setting precedent for future applications?
We talked about that. Precedent setting. When Martin and I and Paul met earlier this week, Paul, could you say a few words about precedent setting?
I guess the good thing is, the zoning board doesn't set precedent with their decisions, so you don't have to be bound by past decisions. Obviously, it's good to be consistent and apply the same thought process and logic, but technically. You're not, this isn't a court, you don't have to be set by your own precedent, so. You're free to take each case as it is individually and weigh it on its own merits.
Okay.
And, and I think when you look and take the feel and nature of the neighborhood, you know, these houses are fairly close to each other, rather small. So I'm not, she's not going to be the only person close to her sightline in that, in that general area.
Yeah, oh no, there, there's little small cottages in there, so I live down there, so.
I, I had made a note, there was a property on Higgins Road last year that we approved a very similar structure for, and it's right on the street from campground.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're good. Okay. Jared, would you read the proposed findings of fact, please?
Sure.
Proposed findings of fact, the zoning board of appeals finds that the property is located at 585 Campground Road, map seven, parcel 336. And is located in District A residential. Or two, the applicant has applied for special permit pursuant to MGL C48A. S dot six and Eastham zoning by law, section 19 dot two. Non-conforming uses, building structures and section 7.2 setback requirements to build an addition of. A 279 square foot sunroom over the existing concrete slab patio. Number three, the existing, the existing building setback west is pre-existing non-conforming at 19.6 feet where a minimum of 25 is required. The proposed addition will increase the non-conformity by 12.6 feet, resulting in a final setback of 6.7 feet from the property line. Number four, the property is pre-existing non-conforming to site coverage limits at 1,668 square feet. Where a maximum of 1,500 square feet is permitted. Under section 7 dot 4 dot 9 dot 1, a pre-existing non-conforming property may increase site coverage up to 20%. Of the existing site coverage, 304 square feet via special permit. From the zoning board of appeals, the proposed site coverage increase is 279 square feet. After an evaluation of all evidence presented, the site is adequate for proposed use in terms of. Size and proposed structure or use, the lot is 7,119 square feet and consists of two structures, a dwelling and a small shed. The existing site coverage is 1,668 square feet with a 23.43% coverage ratio. The proposed site coverage is 1,947 square feet. With a 27.35% coverage ratio, an increase of 279 square feet and 3.92%. Number six, after an evaluation of all evidence presented, the site is suitable for the proposed structure or use. With regard to the purpose and intent of the zoning district, the proposed addition would not significantly change the use of the area. The yard is currently fenced with a combination of white picket and solid privacy fence blocking the view of the addition from the abutting property. Number seven, the proposal does provide adequate management of traffic flow and minimizes unsafe and harmful impacts. Within the site as well as in relation to the adjoining streets and properties. The proposed plan will not change parking or have any harmful impacts related to the adjoining streets or properties. Number eight, after an evaluation of all evidence presented, the proposed structure is compatible with surrounding land uses. So as to minimize harmful impact or conflict with existing desirable neighborhood character, including views, vistas and other aesthetic values. The moderate increase in the size of the dwelling is compatible with the sizes and character of other homes in the neighborhood. The proposed addition does not impact views, vistas or aesthetic value. Number nine, the proposal does have adequate methods of sewage disposal, sources of potable water and site drainage. The proposed plan does not alter the bedroom count or methods of disposal or drainage. Number 10, the proposal does provide adequate protection and maintenance of groundwater quality and recharge volume. And the water quality of the coastal and fresh surface water bodies. The site is not located within any resource areas, Conservation Commission approval is not required. No detrimental issues have been identified related to the degradation or alteration of the natural environment. Involving slopes or other topographical features, vegetation, wetlands and wildlife habitat. Number 11, the proposal does provide adequate provision for utilities and other necessary or desirable public services. The site is serviced by electrical, telephone, cable and data services adequate for residential use, no detrimental issues have been identified. Number 12, artificial light, noise, litter, odor and other sources of nuisance or inconvenience will be adequately controlled. A condition of approval will require all exterior lights to be down shielded to reduce light spill onto adjacent properties. Number 13, the proposal does provide adequate protection from degradation and alteration of the natural environment. The site is not located within any resource areas, no negative impacts were identified. Number 14, after an evaluation of all evidence presented and based on the findings of fact. The proposed alteration to the pre-existing non-conforming structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Or the public welfare than the existing non-conforming structure. While the setback will decrease, while the setback will decrease the setback and increase the non-conformity of the structure. Given the small size of the lots in the neighborhood and the proliferation of mineral setbacks, no detrimental impacts have been identified.
And Noah Butters appeared in, in interest. In favor. Of the proposal and there were no letters received.
Wrong.
Oh, oh wait.
One letter.
There, one letter. Thank you, thank you, thank you, you read it, yes, it's sitting right there in front of me. Okay, Martin, you have a question?
Paul, I want to ask you about number 12, the artificial light on the, on the site. We say will require all exterior lights to be down shielded. Are we, in this case, are we saying just the lights that are installed for this project or everything for the house? Because it says all exterior lights.
I mean, it really is intended for new lighting.
Yeah.
I guess I'll.
We'll update it next time, because these are standard conditions, so I'm just saying.
I will say. It's a special permit. The whole site is technically up for discussion.
Right.
So if, if the board identified that other lighting related to the, to the existing house was going to cause an issue. As it relates to this addition, you know, it can be discussed, you could have a condition. But the way it's written, we're really just talking about the new addition lighting. So unless, it's a long way of saying if we identified issues with other lighting. It's all on the table for discussion and mitigation, but.
All right, so in the future, we'll, 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 we'll make that note if we, if we think that there's something that needs lighting. I don't have any indication that there's a problem here, so I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the findings of fact?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
And I agree as well. All right. Doug, would you read the conditions, please?
Proposed conditions, one, no building permit shall be issued until the application complies with all pertinent sections of the town of Eastham zoning by law. Number two, the applicant shall obtain a building permit from the Eastham Building Department prior to the start of the construction. Number three, the applicant shall verify bedroom count and septic design for adequacy with the approved plan. With the Eastham Health Department and if necessary, shall obtain approval from the Board of Health prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number four, all exterior lights shall be down shielded to reduce light spill and nuisances to adjacent properties.
Should we, excuse me, should we interject here, all exterior lights on the addition?
Or the west side, you could say.
All right, let's, let's put, let's put that in, all exterior lights on the, you say?
West exposure facing the neighbors.
Okay, on the west exposure.
Please follow us, right, because whatever lights are in that rooms.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, so number four would now read, all exterior lights on the west exposure of the construction shall be down shielded to reduce light spill and nuisances to adjacent properties.
Yes, wonderful.
Number five, the applicant is responsible for providing building plans to the Eastham Building and Fire Departments. Plans shall contain information on construction methods and materials sufficient to conduct a full code compliance review. Number six, planned reviews conducted by town staff as part of this approval have been conducted for conformance with applicable sections of the zoning by law. And for adequacy of the site for public safety, access and environmental impacts. An additional planned review for health and safety co-compliance will be required and may result in changes to the approved plans. Any changes to the proposed site plan by J.C. Ellis Designs dated October 25, 2024. Proposed floor plans and elevations A1, 1 dash 2 and A2, 1 dash 4. Were proposed elevations as drawn, submitted with the application materials received January 7, 2025. Excepts those that are de minimis must be reviewed by the zoning board. If the board finds a change to be substantial, renotice is necessary for a new hearing. Number seven, the applicant owner shall maintain the perimeter vegetation in accordance with zoning by law, section 7.2.6. Dash perimeter vegetation. An area not less than six feet in width measured from the perpendicular to the lot line around the perimeter of the lot. Shall be maintained with trees, shrubs or other plants in order to keep and or create a naturalized buffer between properties. Portions of this area may be paid for pedestrian and vehicular access. But at no time shall the pedestrian and or vehicular, vehicular access be located within six feet of the side property lines. Number eight, landscaping within the six foot perimeter may be undertaken at any point in the future per zoning by law, section 10.1.6. Perimeter vegetation, clear cutting of vegetation within the six foot perimeter vegetation setback. Where removal of vegetation is not subject, subject to any other regular trip or review. May be approved by the planning board or its designee without a public hearing, provided that Butters, sharing a common lot line have been notified. Of proposed site work no less than 14 days prior to the date of approval. And Noah Butters has requested a public hearing. In making its determination, the planning board or its designee shall utilize applicable sections of the zoning by law, section 10, site plan approval. Number nine, the applicant shall file the special permit decision letter with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Provide a copy of the building department before issuance of a building permit. Number 10, the board reserves the right to monitor the ongoing construction for compliance with the approved plan.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the conditions?
So moved.
And a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor as well, five to, five to nothing. May I have a motion to approve? The. Application for special permit.
So moved.
Or, for the. This, for the setbacks. Okay?
I, I'll move.
Okay, and a second, to approve the, uh. The setbacks, special permit. We have two different permits here, we're.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? All right, and I agree as well. All right, for the second. Permit, the site plan approval permit for case number ZBA 2025-1, may I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay, and a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I agree as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
You're doing a very nice thing, I hope it works out well for you.
I do too, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a good night, enjoy it out there.
What? Because there, we had two problems, the setback first and then the second is. Right?
It's supposed to be.
Yes.
Six foot and crap.
It was the act of the variance.
The lots down there?
Special permit, right there.
They're all supposed to.
Up here, uh, special permit for setbacks.
Wet down there too, right, there's a stream.
Two special permits?
There's a stream.
Oh, because one was for the coverage of the lot.
Yes, yes, yes. No, no, two separate things.
It's actually, um.
Okay.
Wet, city of wetlands, kind of.
We have two sets of. Meeting minutes, one from our December 5th. Uh, meeting. The only, I have a, I have a correction or. I guess I'll call it a correction. At the, the parties in interest present by Zoom. Bob Brunz is listed as a party in interest. Whereas in actuality, Bob Brunz is our liaison to the select board and I think we should separate. That from the other people who were here as parties in interest. So other than that. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Jan, uh, December 5th meeting? Okay.
I will second that.
Okay. Oops. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself as well, okay, and then we have. Minutes from the. Joint Board Meeting. Including the zoning task force, the planning board and us. And. I have no corrections or additions, if anybody else does. All right, may I have a motion to approve? That.
So moved.
And I will second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and the last thing. Okay. Every couple of years, we have to renew our. The training. Our online training for. Conflict of interest law. So I. I had to do mine, I just finished mine this past week. Martin is working on his, I understand, Bob, you have. Jared, yours is. Since it's the beginning of a new year, this is just a listing of all of us. Our addresses, phone numbers, emails. Dates when your ethics or your conflict of interest. Accreditation is up. And if there's any changes or corrections on any of that information, please let me know.
Do we need to provide a certificate of completion or you're, you're able to see that online?
No, you need to send it to the town clerk.
We do have to send it.
I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite sure because when I brought my new certificate in. Not Linda, but. Kayla. Kendra, thank you, Kendra, said that they had already gotten notice.
Oh, all right.
But you know, to cover yourself, I would, I would make a copy, I, I have all my stuff. Make, just make a copy and bring it in, just to be safe.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Way back when, during one of my earlier terms, we went through the process of getting the members of the zoning board. Designated as, as special. Town, town.
Employees, we are, yes.
We have to like, renew that at any point, do we have to remind somebody at any point?
No.
No, I think once we're appointed to the board, we are automatically considered a special employee of the town.
Okay.
You're still employed.
No, the question wasn't whether we were employed, it's whether you're specially employed.
Special.
Everybody remembers you're special, Bob.
All right, we're special.
This conversation is so stupid, anyway. That says that I could, because technically we can't show up. And appeal for, represent anybody else at any board in town, because we're employees. That would be a conflict of interest.
If you're a special.
Yes.
But if you're a special employee, you can do that for any board that's not your own.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's.
It's a lackluster term.
No, but we're special.
Well, that's covered extensively in the training, so.
It is.
That's how we got it.
But you haven't renewed sense.
All right, never mind.
Okay.
I wanted to thank everyone that was able to make it to the zoning workshop, I appreciate you being there. I think. I think everybody was there.
I wasn't.
Okay, with spine, no problem. Did you get your binder?
I did, yeah.
Okay, if you have any questions, if anyone has any questions or any follow up, don't hesitate to call me, or come in and talk to me. There will be a public information session at the library on February twenty seventh. Again, we'll be covering the same material, but not as great, you know, we're going to simplify that.
Will you send a notice?
Presentation.
Will you send us a notice to remind us, please?
And then the this process requires a public hearing with the Cape Cod Commission. That'll be, that's actually February twenty sixth. And then the formal public hearing with the planning board will be March nineteenth.
Okay.
So you're all welcome to come to those things, but you certainly don't need to. That's why we had the workshop, so we went through everything in higher detail than we will be at these other meetings. But again, I just want to thank you all for making the time, and again, anything, questions, comments?
So you'll, you'll, you'll send us those three dates?
Yes.
Email or something, yes. Okay. Do we have any cases for next month?
Nothing yet.
Okay, and have we passed the deadline?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't need to meet March.
March.
March, okay. So you can all go fly fishing or something?
It's.
Great suggestion.
Are there any other zoning amendments going to be on the warrant?
Yes, there will be one regarding the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And that is being sparked by the changes at the state with the new housing legislation. So we need to do some housekeeping changes, just definitions and things for consistency, and there's some language that may have to be changed because our bylaw has specific language that states that the ADU has to be rented year round, or, or unoccupied or rented year round, and this kind of like doesn't make sense, but the, the language that the state has may not allow us to keep that language in there, which we're, they're still, we're still waiting for some guidance on what the state is actually intending. So the legislation says you, you can prohibit these ADUs from being short term rental, which is good, and we have, we have that. But our bylaw, it's just kind of a twist of the way we word things, because we actually require that you, year round, so we're trying to figure out if the language is, we can keep our current language or we have to adjust it a little bit. But the spirit of what we're trying to do is the same, it's just, so that's just a little
Okay.
technical glitch, but it's really mostly just housekeeping for consistency. And I'm trying to think, the other thing, well, this relates to this board. The centerpiece of this whole state legislation is these ADUs are allowed by right, which we already do that in our bylaw, with the exception of the Seashore District, and the exception of if an ADU triggers site plan review. We have to do away with that in the bylaw, so basically, because we can't allow a special permit.
So the site coverage rules are not going to.
Yeah, sorry, the site coverage applies, sorry, the site coverage applies and the dimensional applies. So if they're trying to put an ADU in a setback, it would come. It's really just, sorry, it's, it's the special permit requirement in the Seashore District, which we put in there because the Seashore has its own, you know, specific issues with site coverage and amount of
Coverage?
Coverage, you're allowed. So we always put that carve out, and because, you know, just the peculiarities of the Seashore, we put that in there. But basically, we got to treat all of the residential zones the same, so we have to remove that special permit requirement, so.
Yep.
All right, I just want to make a quick point as the task force representative here from the ZBA. The task force report that Mary Ne and Paul wrote with a lot of help from Jackie as well, is really well reading. If you haven't read that yet, it's about thirty pages, and it's full of diagrams, maps. Feel free to share that with anybody in town that you want to. I think, I think getting that information out earlier is better, and you'll be able to, you know, answer questions of what, you know, people are asking about because of things about the heights of building, and it's quite a, quite a bit of change, especially when it comes to the form-based zoning. And because what's going to town meeting will be about ninety pages of sleep worthy email. Read it when you go into bed. But that, so, so getting that task force report out as widely as possible in town is important so that people have an understanding of here's what we're doing and why we're doing it. And that's just my only comment, and to say thanks to a lot of work by Mary Ne, and of course, the town staff, Paul and Paul and Jackie and others. Thank you.
Thank you. And all of that information is on the planning board's webpage, there's a link, proposed amendments twenty twenty five, so the report, the actual marked up bylaw, and the design guidelines are all there. That's the easiest place to find them online.
I will say to add to that, that there are three actual documents that, that Kane was working on. The first was the report, the second is what's going to town meeting, and the third is the planning guide that the planning board will pass, which is also about eighty pages. Similar. But that's not going in front of town meeting. There's a lot of pictures too.
Pictures and diagrams.
So there is not, not to add confusion, but so you will find three documents related to the spring's town meeting.
But the zoning changes will not immediately require changes, right? It's only as buildings are upgraded that
Correct.
we'll have to enforce.
Preexisting nonconforming, baby.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, any other
Interesting conversation.
Business? Thoughts? Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Wait around.
Don't we like each other's company?
We do.
Motion to adjourn, always in a way.
Okay. And all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned at
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.